Good morning. Welcome to our Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting for February the 4th, 2020. I'd like to remind everyone at this time to, if you will, to silence your cellphones this time. And Mr. John Bell, Commissioner John Bell's not able to be with us today because he has a doctor's appointment. He may be here a little later. I'm going to have the invocation in his place this morning, and Mr. Kamarti has the Pledge of Allegiance, so let's bow our heads, please. God, we're thankful for this time we can come together again to do the business of Wayne County. Father, our hearts are burdened this morning, and I ask a special blessing this morning on members of this board and our friends and our neighbors and our families that are dealing with health issues today. Father, you tell us, and you a word that we have not because we ask not. And Father, I'm asking today that if it be your will, that these ones that we are thinking of, you know their names, you know each one individually. They need your healing hand this morning, and we're asking that you would do that because we are a selfish people. We like to keep our friends and our neighbors with us here as long as we can. We are grateful, Father, for this country that we live in. And this morning, we have to say that we are so pleased and proud of our first responders, our sheriff's department, our police department, firemen, emergency services, and our military that are serving throughout this world, keeping us safe on a daily basis. As we proceed in this meeting this morning, I ask, Father, that you would give us the wisdom that we need to help the least of these in this county, that what we say and do today would be for all citizens of Wayne County. These things I ask in your name. Amen. Amen. Mr. Kamarti.
Please stand and face the flag. And before we say this, I want us to all reflect on the fact that this is a pledge of allegiance for every American. I pledge allegiance to the ally of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have approval of the minutes from January 21st, 2020 meeting.
A move approved.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion carries. Discussion and adjustment of the agenda. Mr. Tannenbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to add on number six, under consent, reject and rebid ambulance remounts. As the board's aware, we have had some confusion with respect to some of the bid specs. In order to make it clear and fair, we would just like to put on there to reject all bids and that we would rebid as quickly as possible. That's all I have as far as walk-ons.
Do any commissioners have any comments or changes?
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Motion to approve, all in favor, any discussion. Raise your right hand, please, for approval. Thank you. Mr. Tannenbaum, have a special presentation?
The mayor is here.
We do have a resolution recognizing the 150th anniversary of the town of Mount Olive. And if the mayor would like to come up, I have a copy of it. It's in the room.
Morning, commissioners, greetings from the town of Mount Olive. I hope each and every one of you like pickles. If you don't, please feel free to share those. And as well, any of other staff with the county, people here would like any, we'll make that happen as well at the next meeting. So again, I thank you for this opportunity to come before you today and share with you some exciting events that are going on in Mount Olive. That's how I'm almost careless passing those out. Thank you.
There's the right ones. Still, I love them.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Believe it or not, in the summer months when I was an intern, I used to be the taste tester in quality control of Mount Olive pickle, and I tasted every bit of product that came through that line. And I can assure you, I always did it around lunchtime, and I enjoyed every bit of that job. And that's when I increased the most, when it came to poundage around this way. Thoroughly enjoyed it. Hope you enjoy it. Again, thank you for your time. Thank you for that wonderful prayer, Chairman Mayor. And it's good to see all of you. If you will, I want to direct your attention to the resolution. I wanted to tell you this morning, good morning. The town of Mount Olive celebrates its 150th anniversary in 2020. I'd like to invite each and every one of you to kick off this celebration, March 1st at 4:00 at the University of Mount Olive Southern Bank Auditorium. March 1st is the official day of incorporation back in 1870. Early in the day, at 2:00, we are asking all local churches to ring their bells to get us officially started. The town was established around the coming of the railroad in 1840s and land to lay out. The town was purchased from the Wynn's, prominent family of African-American and Native American descent. We have a great history in Mount Olive, and the 150th Committee has a series of talks and events to celebrate it throughout the first rest of the year. You'll be able to follow the schedule on the town of Mount Olive's website. I want to tell you how important this is for our town, but I think the first thing I need to do is just read you the resolution and not to help identify why this is so important for the town of Mount Olive and for Wayne County. Resolution recognizing 150th anniversary of the town of Mount Olive, North Carolina. Whereas Mount Olive, North Carolina began with the coming of the railroad in 1838, the Wynn family was instrumental in the establishment of the Mount Olive, North Carolina we know today. And whereas the Wynn's were a free family of African and Native American descent who sold much of their present-day Center Street land to what became known as historic Wilmington and Weldon Railroad. When completed with 161 miles of track, the Wilmington and Weldon Railroad was the largest railroad in the world at that time. And whereas Benjamin Oliver, a Duplin County planner and one of the founding fathers of Mount Olive, named the new community for the biblical Mount of Olives. And whereas on July 1st, 1853, the village of Mount Olive was granted a post office and grew steadily afterwards, Dr. Gideon Monroe Roberts, the son-in-law of Benjamin Oliver, was appointed the first postmaster and was the first physician of Mount Olive. He owned lands which he purchased from the Wynn family. And whereas the Wilmington-Raleigh Railroad opened a train depot in the vicinity of Center Street in 1840s, this train depot was destroyed by fire in 1862. The passenger train depot was built in 1910 at the intersection of North Centers and West College Streets. Years later, it was relocated to 110 West Main Street and is now used as a community center. And again, it's located not right next to our housing authority. Whereas the 1910 census indicated the population in Mount Olive, North Carolina was 393 people. The 2010 census reported a population of 4,589 people. And whereas the town of Mount Olive's three oldest churches are First Baptist Church, established in 1863, Northeast Chapel Original Free Will Baptist Church, established in 1865, and First United Methodist Church, established in 1870. And whereas a number of businesses and industries established in the town of Mount Olive, North Carolina grew and continue to prosper today, gaining regional and national distinction. And whereas the University of Mount Olive, established in the town of Mount Olive in 1953, is well-known as a progressive institution of higher education that meets the needs of students throughout North Carolina and beyond. And whereas the town of Mount Olive is often referred to as the pickle capital of the world and is known far and wide for the North Carolina Pickle Festival and the New Year's Eve Pickle Drop. And whereas the town of Mount Olive received its charter of incorporation on March 1st, 1870 by the state of North Carolina and will celebrate its 150th anniversary on March the 1st, 2020. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Kenneth Calhoun, Mayor in the town of Mount Olive, and Board of Commissioners do hereby support the 150th anniversary, which our town actually did last night. And we would respectfully request that you would do the same today. But before we get to that, I just want to let you know just some of the events that we have going on in town real quickly. On March 1st, as I already said, at 4:00 p.m. at UMO Southern Bank Auditorium, we have a number of, we have a nice program. We're hoping that we've invited Governor Cooper to attend this event. We're going to have things, programs that go over the Wynn family history, having a special presentation, special music. We're also going to have a raising of our town special presentation by Lynn Williams with Mount Olive Pickle Company. And we're going to be talking about Carver's History by Mr. Al Sutherland. Again, March 1st, being ringing of the church bell, that's going to be kind of unique for our town. We'll have all the churches in town notified to ring their churches, all their bells all at one time in town, so we're really looking forward to that. We're having a commemorative 150th anniversary ornament that we're going to be selling at the pickle festival for people can use in Christmas decorations or anything else if they want to hang in their house. So we're looking forward to having that developed and ready. Also, we're having banners installed all over town when it comes pickle festival weekend or week commemorating this special event. We have a 2020 sequential ses- quincentennial calendar of events. Again, please look on our city's website and stay tuned for all the things that are going to be happening throughout the year. It won't be happening just at any one time. It'll be happening throughout the year in celebration of this special time in Mount Let's see. With that being said, I think I am done with this presentation of resolution, and I respectfully request for your adoption of this resolution today. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to, before the motion, we accept this resolution.
As written. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to set the resolution as read. Are there any comments this time?
I would like to just acknowledge our mayor of Mount Olive, which I'm a proud member of that town, that I look forward to hearing and seeing some of the things that are going to take place. About two months ago, I happened to be at a NAACP meeting, and Lynn Henson, who's on the Board of Education, is a descendant, a member of a larger Wynn family. He gave an excellent presentation of the acquisition of that property and how his family was part of that whole, what you just said, selling that property to, to make the town, to have a site. That's a wonderful name. When I came to this area in 85, that was one of the first things that I heard about, was how the town of Mount Olive got its inception. So I'm looking forward to that, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We are very proud of being the second-largest municipality in the county. We have so much to contribute south of the river, and we love our county and we love our home. As a segue to that, again, I want to tell you thank you for all that you've done for Mount Olive in the past and as we continue to work together in the future. One thing that's particularly concerned, I was riding up here this morning from Mount Olive along 117 Highway, watching the jets fly over. Beautiful morning, good start to the morning. But one big thing that I would encourage you to think about, there's so much litter throughout this county, throughout the city of Goldsboro, throughout the town of Mount Olive. I would encourage you to please join us in our efforts to help clean this county and to keep it clean. I don't know what type of enforcement actions are needed or what kind of examples we need to make in the future, but when it comes down to it, this, it's going to be so important for all of us to get together to try to come up with ways to keep our communities clean. It's so important. We're doing, having efforts throughout the city of Goldsboro and Mount Olive, but it takes all of us to try to work together to come up with some solution to litter throughout our county and throughout the state of North Carolina for that matter. So again, I encourage you to please help us do that as well, keeping our hometown special. Thank you for your time.
Is there any other comments? Congratulations on 150. Yeah, congratulations on, and also being the new mayor of Mount Olive. We're all connected, and Mount Olive is a big part of this county.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for this presentation. We have a, we have a motion in front of us to adopt the resolution recognizing the 150th anniversary of the town of Mount Olive, North Carolina. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Carter. If I could ask the mayor, would you again pronounce that word of the 150th anniversary? That was the, what was that again?
Ses- sinquincennial. You meant to do that, didn't you?
I did, I did, because I wouldn't even begin.
You knew what you were doing. Let's see.
I would not even begin to try to pronounce that word, so I just wanted to.
It is just meant for me not to find that word right now, but it is somewhere in my words.
Okay, yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, before, ladies, and he's right about the litter. I don't know how many thousands of bags that the sheriff's department has picked up, and thank you guys for doing that. But until the Journal Assembly puts some real fines on it, you go south here, Georgia, South Carolina, I'm going to definitely charge you 2,000 bucks if you get caught. Until you do that, you're going to.
Well, like Commissioner.
I totally agree with you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kamarti did a great thing when he served on our town. He brought up the use of cameras throughout our township to, for any illegal activity, just things that would help maybe even deter any kind of unwanted activity throughout our town. I'm not saying that that's your solution, but when you put out information that lets people know that, hey, you're being watched, and that may deter, because even in our work with the city of Goldsboro, I had a young lady to see her neighbor put out something on a vacant piece of property, and she recorded it. And so when I brought it to the actual property owner's attention, it was very nice. I said, ma'am, I need your assistance and cooperation to help clean the property. And she wanted to know who and why and if that was really true. I said, ma'am, your tenant is on video. And that was the end of the discussion. So again, maybe that's something to think about.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you bringing up that about the cameras.
Yes.
What spurred that on, if I could take just a moment?
Sure.
A lady came to the board that night, and she complained about gunfire. And she said by the time that the police could get to where the action was, you know, they were already down in Duplin County, probably shooting up down there somewhere. And I brought out the fact that if the cameras could watch the traffic on I-40 in Wade County and be on TV, you know, on Channel 11 at 6:00, tell them what traffic looked like on I-40, we ought to be able to see what happened in Mount Olive. And thank you for you all reacting to that and getting as many cameras as you can in Mount Olive. I hope that makes all of us feel safer.
Yes, sir.
And we, and this, and I want to just give a shout out to this board because we've done everything we can to put cameras with our police so that they will have verifiable information to protect themselves and to make the public feel more comfortable with what happens out in the streets. And there's nothing wrong with, if you're not guilty of a crime, there's nothing wrong with having a camera there. So thank you all for doing that. Thank you for bringing it up.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to thank the mayor and his board. Mount Olive was the second town within the county to unanimously pass support for the quarter cent sales tax. And y'all were very gracious and very, and we really did appreciate that, and just want to publicly thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Biden.
Yes, sir. Enjoy your pickles.
Mr. Tannenbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next under special presentation is a presentation on the Highway 70 Quarter by Commissioner Acop.
I'll keep this short because I know we've got a busy schedule today. But we, the last Highway 70 Quarter Commission, I'm just going to share some of the information with you real quickly. Carol's handing out a map that the print's kind of small on, but it kind of will give you an idea of what we're talking about. First of all, I'm going to start with Division 4 with the DOT, which Wayne County is a part of, the upgrading of Highway 70 interstate status, the section from, in Johnson County, from Wilson Mills down or up to where the interstate status is already at at the Clayton The plans right now, most of the preliminary work has been done, and the plans are for the bids to go out for that part of the project in September of 2020. Okay, the next, the next section is the, basically going to be the Princeton Bypass. That project is also funded in the current 2020, 2029 steel program, and it's going to be a little further out. Rightaway acquisition is, they're going to start handling that in 2023 through 2025, and the bid should go out sometime between, in 2027 and 2029, which is, you know, we're looking at close to 10 years on that part of it before the bids go out. The next section is the section from, it's just maintenance on the existing part. All right, now I'm going to go to Division 2, which is the eastern part of the state, which is also part of the 70 Quarter. The resurfacing, resurfacing from Bear Creek to State Road 1690, which is the section from where the completed part, it just in the edge of Lenore County up to, close to Little Baltimore, that, the bids will be, is going to be let out this fall. It doesn't give the month, it just says anticipated the fall of 2020. All right, the intersection at what they call Little Baltimore down where the Bojangles and San Papa Resto is, that, that is also funded into 2020, 2029 steel program. And that, to change that intersection to interstate status, or change the pattern anticipated, letting those bids out in September of 2024. The Kingston Bypass, they really haven't even decided yet exactly where it's going to be. But when they do decide, the rightaway anticipated acquisitions start, rightaway will be in physical year 2025. Okay, resurfacing part of the existing highway in Lowell County and Craven County, that project has already started. It's 52% complete at the time of this report, and it should be completed in the spring Upgrading the interchange at just west of New Bern, Glen Burnie Road. The status on it is rightaway acquisition is not going to be until, like, 2027. So we're still a long ways out on a lot of this stuff. The upgrading to interstate status from US 70, from Neuse River Bridge, and the new bridges in New Bern, which I call them new bridges, the ones that goes in every direction over the river, down to Thurman Road, construction should start on that part of it, upgrading it to interstate status in the spring of 2021. So that one's not too far out. And from where that project stops down to the next section, which is just west of Newport or Have Lock, that one is so far out there, we don't really have a date on it. I'm wrong. The funding of it has been approved from the 2020 to the 2029 steel program and anticipated start working on it or let the bids out is this year, 2020. All right, the improvement of the gate at Cherry Point, the Slocom Gate, that project was rewarded to S.T. Wood, and it's 87% complete. Completion date on it is the spring of 2020. Have Lock Bypass, they're working on it, and the, and that would be from the Pine Grove to the north of Carter County Line, and completion date on that, they're predicting is May of Okay, the last one, the Newport River Bridge, this is the bridge that goes from Molehead to Beaufort, partially across Radio Island. It would tie into the new bridge that's already been completed, and they're anticipating the bids going out on that, changing it from two-lane to four-lane bridge. The bid should go out on that on 2023. And like I say, Carol gave you all a map that kind of bring you up to some of the projects. And that's, unless there's any questions, that's my report on the US 70 Highway Quarter. I think I missed, I guess, any questions from the. Thanks for that, Commissioner Acop. At this time, we're at a public comments time. I'd like to open the floor up for public comments. Give you a name, phone number, and address, please. Anyone wish to speak? Floor is open for public comment. Anyone wish to speak? Okay, public comments is closed. Mr. Tannenbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, and we did go over this in depth during our pre-agenda discussion, and we did do the walk-on for number six, reject and rebid ambulance remounts. And then with that said, we present this for your consideration for approval.
Purpose of the board, under consent agenda.
I move.
Okay, we have a motion of any discussion on anything on the consent agenda. All in favor of the consent agenda, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under new business, number one is a motion to approve a lease between Wayne Executive Jetport and Scott Woods for a period of three years. You do have a copy of the tentative lease in your agenda packet and a memo from our staff attorney, Andrew Neal. It discusses the terms of the length, 36 months, $1,300 a month. The lease has been recommended by the airport commission. Since it is longer than a year, it does have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. And also, if it is approved, we would like to have with final approval by our legal attorney in case there are some minor changes within the lease that would not change the substance of the lease.
Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the lease at the Wayne Executive Jetport and Scott Woods for a period of three years, subject to the attorney's review.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Mr. Chairman, I have not had time to read this completely. Is there any word in it that, clause in it word for extending the lease, or don't, or is it not necessary at this time?
There is a year, they can go year to year.
Okay. Good deal.
Right now, for three years, if the manager wanted to approve, that would be under a year, and he could extend that on his own accord.
Okay. Got it? Any other question?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Yes, I do point out how important this particular lease is in that it brings an aircraft maintenance facility and, and operation here at our jet port and that is so, so much needed here in Wayne County. So I urge adoption.
And again, this is the, the hanger that we closed upon in November as well. So again, a two month turnaround to get it leased out. I appreciate the work that Andrew's done and also the Airport Commission to get it leased so quickly. And, and again, they solicited bids as well at the commission level.
Okay, any other comments? This, this is a really big step forward for the jet port. We have a motion on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries, thank you.
Next, under new business, we do have a Catch a Glimpse video from our Public Affairs.
This is Catch a Glimpse produced by Wayne County Public Affairs for February 2020. In January, we continued our chairman's corner segment with Chairman Mayo talking about the quarter cent sales tax and everything happening with the Board of Commissioners. Our friends from the United Way stopped by to talk about their campaign from 2019 and what's coming up for the United Way. And students and professors from the University of Mount Olive came to talk about some of the upcoming student drama performances that are happening at the university. Continuing Cooking with Michelle, this month, we learned how to make spaghetti squash with And Lester Rector from the University of Mount Olive came to talk about their upcoming revival happening on campus. We covered the annual Farm Bureau banquet as well as the joint meeting between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners. And we continued our campaign to inform voters about the quarter cent sales tax referendum that will be on the ballot this March. Local municipalities, boards, civic groups and the Chamber of Commerce have all passed resolutions in support of the quarter cent sales tax. And now a video from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Hello and welcome to this week's video of the week. This week, we're taking a look at last week's NCACC Steering Committee meetings. Both the Health and Human Services and the Public Education Steering Committees met last week and here are the chairs of each of those committees with their thoughts on the meetings.
I am Paige Lemell, County Commissioner from Transylvania County, and I am the current Chair of the Health and Human Services Steering Committee for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And we are just now concluding our meeting here in Raleigh and we were very, very lucky today to have presentations from several of our North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services staff around the issues of Medicaid transformation and additionally the non-emergency medical transportation challenges that counties face. We were particularly interested in those topics, given the stalemate on the state level, because without a budget, we are not able to move forward with the Medicaid transformation. So our discussion today was what that might look like in the future, where we are now, and then what we as counties can be doing in the interim to prepare ourselves for that transformation when it finally comes to fruition.
As always, we're concerned about funding one of the issues going back to 1994, we put on the Leandro case, we got a good update on that today and it kind of tells us where we are now and of course, a lot of information is available publicly. And then secondly, we got a feeling or information on the structure of state funding for education. We got a handout there that clears up a lot of things and gives us statistics that, that are important as we take back to our Boards of County Commissioners to, and we prepare to develop a budget on the coming year. It would be a lot of good information that we can share. We just need to continually be informed and there's a lot of things that are coming that we're concerned about being passed down to the counties. And so we have to prepare for that, those issues to come before us and we hope that the state will continue its level and actually step up funding in areas that are, that are critical to them.
Well, that's all we have for this week. If you have questions about anything you've seen here, please email communications@ncacc.org. Thank you for watching and we'll see you next week.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Ms. Chairman, I do have a couple of things I did want to mention. Wanted to mention our, our sales tax meetings and this has really been a, a strong commitment from also the school board, but also from this board and from staff as well. And last night, we did attend the Pikeville City Council, Pikeville unanimously approved support of the quarter cent sales tax for the education projects as we've listed. Appreciate the chairman and also Commissioner Acock for being at that meeting as well. But in the last couple of weeks, we have attended and received approval from the following. The Farm Bureau, Walnut Creek, the town of Walnut Creek or the village of Walnut Creek, the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce, Goldsboro Rotary, Wayne County Tourism Development Authority, the city of Goldsboro, Chamber Government Affairs Committee, and Chip also met with a group around a round table at Carver Heights. And again, we are getting nothing but very positive support from the citizens of our community. They are understanding the needs, they're supporting that, and very happy that we've listed the projects where we want to put the funding. So it's gone really, really well. We still have a lot of time between now and early voting begins February 13th, March 3rd is the primary. We're requested, if you'd like us to come talk to your group, church group, civic group, homeowners group, you name it, we'll, we will come visit you and be glad to talk about the quarter cent sales tax and, and how much is needed and the positives that it will be for education here in Wayne County. But again, next week, the Mount Olive Exchange Club, the Carl Best Ag Luncheon, Fremont Christian Coalition and the Soul and Water Board that we do have next week. So I'll get you all times on that as well. So if you can attend, we'd love to have you. Also wanted to mention, and I hope you saw the email, we will have a Facilities Committee meeting in two weeks at 2:00 PM to discuss the DSS floor plan. So the architect will be here with some cost assessments as well and we've also invited the DSS board to attend so that they can see the presentation as well. Wanted to remind you of our dinner tonight with the North Carolina Farm Bureau President at the Maxwell Center, that begins at 6:00 PM. So would like for you to be there if you can. And then after this meeting, we will be adjourning for our tour and we will start with the new probation and parole building that has been remodeled by our Facilities Department. Then we will go to the 911 Center, then we'll go to the Wayne County Community College Automotive Center and our, our Shell Building and then we'll have lunch from there. So I think it's important that we look at the capital projects that we have going on and really the good progress that has been made and, and give you an update on that. And one of the things I, I did want to mention, when you do walk through the probation buildings and, and again, the John Bell Building that, that we did, is those buildings were really renovated by our staff inside, inside the county. And if you look at a cost estimate of what we've done, it is probably less than $125,000 that we did on each building as far as cost savings. So we've got a lot to be proud of with our facilities staff. It was a great idea to look at that and how we could do that internally instead of contracting that out and, and which would have been much, much more. So just kudos to Kendall Lee and our Facilities Department and the work that we've done on those renovations and really is a huge benefit for the county and, and our cost saving effort. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Board of Commissioners comments, Mr. Page.
Thanks for your due diligence and working and going out to the community to sell, you know, of course, the sales tax because it is so important to this whole county and the future of our kids. And this is just one step in the, in progress of, you know, continuing to work on infrastructure in schools. It's not any one part of the county, the whole county is, we're going to see something in the future. And I'm glad that the projects have been, you know, laid out. And one day, we will get a, a state budget passed and so we will have some more availability of dollars at that point to look at other places in the county as well. So good job on that and a shout out to Kendall and his group. Facilities is doing a great job, saving us a lot of money. This has been a plan that's been going on since George was here and I'm glad to see that we have followed through with it between the John Bell Building, this over here and over here at WCDA and moving everybody around, trying to save dollars. And there are more dollars we can save and I'm sure that we will continue to do that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Mr. Comiskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to bring attention to the fact that I along with Mr. Mayo attended a DSS meeting. And we were made aware of the, of the meeting that you spoke of, but would you give me that date again?
The 18th, 18th at 2:00 PM.
18th, 2:00 PM.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much and we're looking forward to that tour and of course, looking forward that work is going to be done on that. One thing that the public needs to maybe focus on is that the DSS department, and we, and we get a chance to hear the statistics, but the Department of Social Service is in place to help the most needy. And sometimes we have people out in the public who, for whatever reason, maybe the lack of knowledge or whatever their motive is, say, oh, those county commissioners ain't doing nothing. Well, when you look at the fact, I think we have about 40 something departments, DSS is one of the most important. And from what, and I like to ask this question about every other time that I'm to a meeting. I was specifically asked, I would rather, is there anyone going hungry on purpose in Wayne County? And the answer tends to be no. Not saying that everyone gets a full meal every day, every meal, but the opportunity to get a full meal is there. We have soup kitchens and there's a site down in Mount Olive that the corner is busy every day because someone's walking there getting them a loaf of bread if they want to. So there's opportunities out there and I would just encourage our young parents to make themselves knowledgeable and make that opportunity available so that their children will not miss a meal. The school system has programs where food is prepared for children to take home on the weekend. And, and, and it's important for the public to know that there is help out there, you just have to look it out and know everyone can't be helped at the same time because everybody's situations are different. But, but thank goodness for America, we have the opportunity to do a lot and I want us to always remember that. This, this February, and we're, we're inside of February now, and as all, everyone knows, February is designated as Black History Month. And I thank our mayor for bringing up the fact that how Mount Olive got its start. 19, 1838, that land was purchased. That was still about 25 or so years before the Emancipation Proclamation came into effect that technically freed all black people. But there was a thriving family down 117 that were landowners and very progressive. But the interesting thing about that is, sometimes after 1838, down in Wilmington, there was an uprising that set black folk back. And then Jim Crow came along in the 1920s and all of a sudden, you couldn't go to a restroom or drink water out of a fountain. But yet, down Mount Olive, 117, a family made land available so that all that that's down there now could be put down there. Just want to toss that out for our greater gratification. Now, fast forward to this, if I can see this writing on this phone, Saturday, February 8th, they have what they call a Second Annual Black History Prayer Breakfast at Antioch Free Will Baptist Church. And just for your information, Geraldine Lee, our former human resource director, will be one of the guest speakers at that event. And I know in the past, she's focused on the involvement of our ancestors in the military branches and so forth and so on. I'll be interested though, what her presentation would be on this and I plan to try to be there. But I just wanted to bring that up. All through February, there are going to be some events sponsored by churches and different organizations about some of the things that is relevant to our Afro-American community. And the 29th of February, we will have a Black History Parade in Mount Olive. It's being developed right now. And this year, I was asked to serve as the grand marshal for that event and I'm happy to do so, to be involved in that. But as you, as you, as, as the, as the month developed, and I say this out loud to the grandfathers up here, try to make some of this available to your grandchildren. And this is the reason I say that. If we don't teach our grandchildren, our children and grandchildren, to understand our total history, it would be lost. And then it won't be appreciated by each other. And if we don't appreciate each other, America will become weaker and might disappear. Thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
Excuse me. Just a friendly reminder that February 14th, Valentine's Day, so.
That's important.
Stay on the good side of, just, just remind everybody to be keen with that thought.
That's true.
Thank you.
Mr. Daughter?
Mr. Chairman, I have no comments today.
Wow. Are you feeling it?
I'm a little bit under the weather.
Yeah. Mr. Acock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've already mentioned the Highway 70 corridor meeting and, and an update. Also had the pleasure of attending the Firefighters Association banquet at Lane Tree. I want to thank the Commissioners that went and supported our fire departments because, you know, without our support, their work would be a whole lot more difficult. And again, thank you for the turnout because, you know, we need to show, show that group our support because they, they, they provide a great service for us. Also, like for everyone to keep Nahuna community in their prayers and thoughts, especially the Corbett family. Mr. Russell Corbett passed away, he was a community icon, World War II veteran, bought a farm in Nahuna community, I think it was 1956, did not move on to that farm until He was a newcomer to the community and one of the first things that he did for the Nahuna community was donate the land from the Nahuna Fire Department. You know, you could understand someone had been born and raised there, but this was a gentleman that had moved in the community and one of the first things he did was give property away for, for community fire department. And he was also, you know, one of the charter members and he will, he'll be greatly missed. And another thing that he did, when he donated that land, there was a clause in the deed that if it was ever quit being used for a fire department, it would revert back to him or his heirs. Well, all of the equipment that they had to start with was old homemade trucks built on a tobacco barn shelter somewhere. And finally got in a position that they could get what they, what we call a factory truck. Well, that only way we could get it was we had to borrow the money or they did, I wasn't involved in it that much then, they had to borrow the money. Well, with that clause in the deed, they couldn't borrow any money against the station. So there, again, he graciously went to his lawyer and had that taken out of the deed. So he's, he, he was, he was a great asset to the Nahuna community. So just keep his, keep his family in your prayers. And also I think tomorrow's your birthday, Mr. Parker? Okay, happy birthday. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tocot. Yeah, we did lose. We did lose a pillar in our community. Mr. Russell and Ms. Agnes Corbett was the best friends of our family, my mom and dad and our whole family growing up. Yeah, he will certainly be missed in our community. We need more people like him and his family. Yeah, I'm hoping when we do these tours that we're looking at doing today on our county facilities, it won't be too long before we'll be saying, hey, we're going to go tour the new DSS at the Bussin Building. Hopefully, that will take place in the very near future. I've never, since I've been on this board in eight years, I have not seen a commitment by the Commissioners, the staff, Mr. Honeycutt, all your staff, the School Board, the public schools. I've never seen a commitment like I have seen on this quarter cent sales tax. We have, we have, and along with the School Board, have reached every corner of this county to gain support for this quarter cent sales tax. And it looks really good. I have had very few negatives in my goings to the different places we've been to. So we have presented it the very best that we know how to do it. I'm really proud of what is taking place, and I feel in my heart that it's going to I guess, there's so many meetings. Oh, by the way, Commissioner Akoc and I, of course, talking about the fire departments, we went to what, four banquets? We went to four banquets. And of course, Commissioner Akoc and I also, we were asked to make comments, and we would always talk about, guess what, the quarter cent sales tax. So we visited those banquets, and fire departments need our support. We need their support. And as we move forward, I think we got a year ahead of us that is going to be a banner year as far as our county is concerned. That's all I have at this time. I think we need to go back in the closed session.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up one more comment?
Yes.
You mentioned we attended some of the fire department installation of officer or banquets, you know, different departments calling different things. We could have gone to more, but some of the departments had them on the same night, and we just couldn't be in but one place at one time.
Well.
So we're going to try to rotate it, you know? The ones that we missed this year, we'll try to get next year.
Yeah.
But, you know, we do appreciate what they do. Thank you.
Mr. Parker? Just consult with an attorney before we proceed. Okay, a motion to go to closed session. I'll raise your hand, please. You get that, Carol.